All this meeting to order of the City Commission of Rio Grande City, Texas, Wednesday, March the 9th approximately 6:00 PM. Here in Commissioner Chambers, City Hall, 5332 East US Highway 83, Suite 8, here in Rio Grande City, Texas. This time we're going to have the invocation by Commissioner Garza, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Commissioner Jones.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for giving us the opportunity to get together and conduct the city business for the city of Rio Grande. We ask that you be with us, we ask that you guide us in making decisions. We ask you, Lord, and give you thanks for the rain, that it'll continue. We also ask you, Lord, that you bless the people here present, and that you bless this commission, bless the city and this country. In this is name I pray.
The allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas side, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state under God,
Guerrero, please, who roll call in finding a forum?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Villarreal?
Present.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Here.
Commissioner Salinas is absent. Commissioner Ramirez is absent. Commissioner Jones?
Here.
You have a forum, sir.
Thank you. Next, Business and Orders Item C. The 1C, it's public forum. Have A, Rebecca Flores and Daria Vera on plans to commemorate the 1966 farmworker strike.
My name is Daria Redondo Vera. I came here, I was a huelguista in 1966, and now we're here because we're completing 50 years of the huelga. And since we're old enough, I want that story to stay. That's what we're asking for. And here's my companion Rebecca Flores, who's with me.
Let me, I'm gonna say this in English. But thank you so much for putting us on the agenda. I don't know how much time you've given us. How much time?
Go ahead, go ahead.
But I'm here because this is the 50th anniversary of the 1966 farmworker strike in Idalua County. Daria Vera was Secretary Treasurer of the Union local at that time. This is, we're calling this the birthplace of the farmworker movement in the state of Texas, and it really was. Since 1966, the United Farmworkers has been in the valley, in Texas, for 50 years. The reason that we're here for that many years, and the reason we were here from the very beginning is because of the effort that these farmworkers from this county did in 1966. And so we're, we're all getting older, as Daria says, and so we're here to make sure that what they did in that year is remembered. And so the United Farmworkers, the Cesar Chavez Foundation, and la Unión del Pueblo Intero have authorized me, Rebecca Flores, who, I worked with the United Farmworkers for 30 years in South Texas, and so they've authorized me to coordinate the efforts to make this commemoration, not only here in Rio Grande, but across the state. And so I've started that, but of course the most important one is the one here in Rio Grande. And I wanted to ask the city, and I wrote this resolution, and like I was telling Holly, I've been living out of my suitcase for this whole week, so I don't have a printer, I don't have anything. But let me just read this, what I've written. "That on behalf of the United Farmworkers Union, the Cesar Chavez Foundation, and la Unión del Pueblo Intero, I would like to ask for support from the City Council of Rio Grande City, of the commemoration for, of the commemoration, for city leaders to attend the event, to read a city proclamation, to assist with necessary city permits, and to fund some costs being incurred for the event and program that is planned." So that's my petition to you. And I'm asking to see whether that might be something that you might be able to help with. I don't have any, I've thought of different programs, of different items in the program. And I've also thought of the date and the place. And nothing has been agreed to. I'm just, we're just working this thing out. But the strike started on June the 1st. And so I'm thinking that June the 1st, which is a Wednesday, is going to be the date for the event. And we're looking at the kiosk in front of the Old County Courthouse because a lot of the things that happened, happened in the Old County Courthouse. There was a lot of demonstrations there. They were thrown in jail there. And of course, that was kind of the hub of the city at that time. And so I'm looking at the kiosk there in front. I'm expecting, we're right now going, visiting the survivors, the surviving huelguistas and the peregrinos. And we're finding, of course, that the majority of them have passed away. But there are still some, elderly, very, very elderly. So I'm expecting in the middle of a hot summer day, about 150 people. That's what I'm expecting. There may be more, but that's what we're going to shoot for. So we're thinking of doing, starting up at maybe 9:30, having a program, and making it a nice program. I'm going to invite Cesar Chavez's son, Paulo Chavez, or the President of the United Farmworkers, Arturo Rodriguez, to be here for that event. And they have assured me that either one or the other will be here. And so we're inviting the surviving huelguistas and peregrinos to come and to share their part of the story. We're going to videograph all of the story. We're going to try to put that video and the recordings, and digitize them so they can be accessible to people who are interested in this history. And I'm working with Trinidad Gonzalez from South Texas College, who has, who is a master in all of this, all of this effort, to help me make sure that that does in fact happen. In the, in the program, my, my plan is to have Daria Vera, who was a huelguista, and the only, well, there's two other surviving leaders. There's Valdemar Diaz, who was Vice President, and there was Rodrigo Garcia, he was Vice President also, and then Daria Vera. So Daria Vera is probably going to be the speaker. One of the things that we want to make sure of is to highlight the fact that there were so many women involved. And I've been going through the list, and I asked who were the people working in the huelga, working as peregrinos, and all these women's names come up. So we're asking for Daria Vera to speak as a huelguista. Erminia Ramirez to speak as a peregrina, because she walked, she was 13 at the time, walked from here all the way to Austin, Texas. And so she, like I said, she was 13. She is a treviño. And then I'm asking Ed Kruger, who was a pastor, to come in and talk about the perspective of the religious groups that participated in this strike. And there were very many. Very many did not, but very many in fact did. Bishop Medeiros, who was a bishop at that time here in Brownsville, gave a mass at the shrine of our Lady San Juan and San Juan, welcoming and supporting the farmworkers. As did Bishop, Archbishop Lucy in San Antonio, and Bishop Drury in Corpus Christi. And then I'm asking Alex Moreno, who is an attorney now and used to be a state representative, to speak because he's a historian, he's on the Idalua County Historical Commission. And so he's kind of like, you know, put the history together and knows it, and knows it very well. I have contacted, as you know, the mayor, the students, the assistant principals at the two high schools here, to see if the students might do some oral histories. I'm not sure where that's gone. I haven't been able to get any information from those two schools. But I'm hoping that some students, as I requested, have contacted their own grandfathers and grandmothers to kind of build an oral history of what they remember. Because that's the age, right? That's the age of the folks who were involved. And so I'm trying to, I guess in the whole thing is not only record all of this, but bring in as many people as possible who were involved at that time. And really focus, focus all the attention on the people who were, who really were struggling. And as you, as you all know, as a result of that strike, and as a result of the, of the march that went from here to Austin, Texas, at that time, there was no minimum wage law. Franklin Roosevelt had passed a minimum wage law in the '30s, but Texas had never passed one. And so one of the demands was that we pass a minimum wage law for a dollar and a quarter. At that time, farmworkers in Sartre County were earning 40 cents an hour to harvest cantaloupes. And so they were saying, you know what, we need to. And so that was their struggle, dollar and a quarter. But the other things that happened was that the Texas Rangers beat them and jailed them on laws that were in fact unconstitutional. They were, they were unconstitutionally detained under the Fourth and Fourteenth Amendment, I believe, of the Constitution. And so because this happened, lawsuits were filed, and those unconstitutional laws were in fact thrown out out of the Texas statutes. And then the US Supreme Court in 1974 ruled that what the Rangers had done was denied these folks their due process under the US Constitution. And so the victories were hard won, right? They got beat, they got thrown in jail. They walked 500 miles. They were hard won. And yet, this story is what the Texas Historical Commission classifies as an undertold story. Like nobody, nobody has talked about it. Nobody has said it. And so...
I read the article, Sons of Zapata.
Did you?
In fact, I saw it, it had a picture there. And it recounts a story, I mean, a story that, and I agree with you. I mean, it must be told, it must be heard. And the account and the struggles. I myself, being a migrant worker, I mean, as far as working the fields and obviously Ms. Vera and many individuals have gone through that. But it's a great recount of the story itself. So again, thank you so much for sharing that. And yes, saw the, the story about the Rangers and how they had some enforcing or trying to break up the strikes. But very good reading, excellent reading and counting the story. So Ms. Vera?
Anything that we can be able to help you out with? You know, can contact Holly? You know, we can use the access channel to be able to help you out and trying to promote this throughout the city so we can get the residents of Rio Grande City to come out. To hear this, I would be more than interested to learn more about it. I remember, you know, Grandma, my grandmother talking about this to me. You know, I would be more interested in hearing a little bit more about it and learning more about it.
Well, there's a couple of things that were, that were, I've been talking to a lot of folks here in Rio Grande. And, and so I understand that I need permits to use a kiosk. And I don't know if there's fees attached to that. I need a permit to walk on the street from the kiosk to the main plaza, to the De Herina Plaza. And I want to use that place to feed the strikers. And so the fees and the permits for all of that. So I need some, I guess some handholding for somebody to walk through all that.
Get up the details and convince it with Ms. Vez, and she can go ahead and follow up.
Follow up and help you out as much as possible.
Okay. Well, yes, like I said, we're, we're selling buttons and flags to raise money. And we are attempting to raise money on our own. But, you know, everything, everything costs money. If there's any way the city can assist us in funding some of the costs, and/or allowing us the use of those public places, that would be, I think, great help in terms of our budget and our funds. So as soon as we can meet with the Planning Department and Ms. Vez, I would really, I'm here tomorrow, and I'm, I live in San Antonio. I've been living out of my suitcase for a week already. So if we can be together tomorrow?
I'll be here all day tomorrow.
I'll just call you.
We'd certainly like to incorporate this into part of our history. And I know you've been also talking to Ms. Sarah. This obviously will bring a lot of people from outside our area that relate to this history and event that happened, and that accumulates a 50-year anniversary. So we definitely would like to bring it into the archives of the city as an event of what it represents.
Let me just add a couple of other things, which I think you might be interested in knowing. Is that Idalua County, I talked to Judge Roman Garcia, and he is so interested in doing something to commemorate this event, that he's already agreed that he's going to put a marker in the county court, in the county courthouse grounds on the, on the farmworkers' march as they walk through there. We're going to do something in San Antonio. On Labor Day, we're having a Labor Day mass with the Archbishop because they're also very interested in what happened. And then we're also planning something in Austin, Texas because when they arrived in Austin, Texas on Labor Day, 10,000 people walked from the St. Edward's University to the Capitol. Because John Connally and New Braunfels had told them, "There's no need for you, for you to walk any farther because I'm not going to be there." And besides that, Connally was the governor at that time. He says, "And besides that, this is no way for you to ask for meetings." And so the workers just got incensed about it, and so they continued walking. And I think the public also got incensed about it. And so that's when 10,000 folks decided to join the farmworkers and make a statement about the cause of the farmworkers was more important than having John Connally wait for them at the Capitol. And so the marker in, in, in Rio Grande, I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the marker, because I always want a title, is going to be the birthplace of the farmworker movement in Texas. The marker in Austin is going to be, I'm going to title it and hope I don't have any pushback on it, maybe I will. It's going to be the birthplace of the Chican movement in Texas. Now, I've thrown that out two or three meetings with some Rasunida people, with some people who did walkouts in El Cao Chalsa. And I've, and I've suggested that it was, that the farmworker movement was in fact the birth of the Chican movement in Texas. And everyone has agreed that that in fact is the truth. Because after that, after 1966, you see all the different groups organizing and pushing for equality in the school systems, in politics, and in every other different institution. And, because they talked about the El Cao Chalsa walkout in '68, then you had the Obalde walkout in '69. And so you started to see how young people started to take matters, take matters so that they could change things. And, and therefore then they did. And so, so we'll see how that, how that is. But, but that's why I come here, is because this event that occurred here is so important to all of us, all of us Chicanos, all of us Mexican origin, or whatever we're calling ourselves now. Because from this, from this point, things began to change because people woke up. So I really appreciate the fact that Daria and all these lowest paid people in the country took this issue on their shoulders and they, and they fought for it until it got, until it won. So anyway, I'm...
Ms. Vera, muchisimo gracias, Ms. Flores.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
I was, I was telling the mayor, Ms. Flores, that 1960, well, I think I'm the oldest here in the group. I wasn't born yet, but I remember in 1966, I was, I was seven years old. And that where the organize, the organization was taking place was at the old theater on Florida Street. And that theater used to belong to my grandfather.
Oh, really?
And we lived across the street. So I, I know that there, I remember very vague, but I remember the gatherings there. And I know that in my family, from some of my, my aunts, there's still, because I've seen it myself, that there are some photographs
Oh, really?
of, of the gatherings there at the old theater. So even though I don't know much about it, but it's very interesting and it is very important for, for the history of Rio Grande. And like Mr. Jones and the mayor have said, you know, we're willing to help out with whatever we can and make it successful here in Rio Grande. It is a big part of Rio Grande, and it's a story that needs to be told.
Yeah. Well, I sure appreciate your support. And we'll be, we'll be meeting and we'll see how it all works out.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your attention.
Next, Business and Orders, Item 1D, Departmental Reports. May I ask anything under?
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. There, it's been a very active month, a very fast and fierce month. A lot of departments having different meetings, events, activities, and ourselves. We also attended that trip in Washington with several agencies, the controller also. But I know that most recently, we had our police chief also meet with, have met with the Lieutenant Governor that just came out of the news. Chief, if you'd like to give us just that. And also on the active shooter training y'all just went through.
Great video, by the way, on the active shooter training there.
Good evening. Did you get to saw the video? There was, the last week, and you know, it was a three-day course with the Board of Patrol, the School District, the Sheriff's Office. And, you know, it was really realistic for the guys that actually took that course. And, you know, that's something that we want to continue bringing. It's hard to get it down here because there's so much of a demand through Board of Patrol, they're the ones that give it. And they can only get out here in short times. But that was very productive, and you know, we're going to try to see how, how we can get everybody else trained through other agents, and also train ourselves within our departments and, you know, work with all the other, you know, police departments and sheriff's offices in our area. Yes, so Ms. Vez was saying that we did have a meeting yesterday in McAllen, Lieutenant Governor Senator Mendoza and Colonel McGraw. And it was a productive meeting. We had a chance to actually state what was going on in our area, you know, to the differences between, you know, the DPS being here and what we had before. You know, our, our numbers have gone down in seizures within the city. You know, some of the traffic within the city has moved out to other areas. And, you know, that gives us opportunity actually to work a little bit more on our issues that we have, which are the calls. So that was a pretty productive meeting, you know, yesterday. I have some numbers in the, in my report. If you guys could see that, you see that some of the numbers have gone down, some have gone up from last year to this year. And we have 2014 and 2015. Service calls have gone up, we've grown from 2014 to 15. But our accidents went down, for example, 71 from last year. So that's an improvement. Our 911 calls, the number seems big, 17,000 911 calls on 14, and 21,000 coming in on 15. But these are actually calls that people are coming in, calling, hanging up, or, you know, reporting something. So not all of them are active calls that we actually take. On service calls, on 14, we had 8,427. And on 15, we had 8,459. So that's the difference in 23. So this, this report in the next week that follows, you know, details by month, what we're doing versus last year. So that's what we got for that. And, you know, our guys are doing a great job. There was a burglary of a business here down, down 833 last week, they sold three vehicles, they recovered them all. But of course, I think DPS recovered one of them. We have suspects, and, you know, they're actually doing their stuff and, you know, they're, they're out there. That's what I got from my report.
And that's a continued effort there, Chief Castillo, with all the other law enforcement agencies. And that video certainly is working with collaboration of other law enforcement agencies, working for our safer communities. So again, kudos for that because it works. And from what we've seen, the numbers are down in reference to incidents and so on. So again, continue that. And we'll continue with those partnerships. And again, great video, I did see it. It was an awesome video showing the, the active shooter. And hopefully we can get everybody trained.
Yes, Chris did a great job with the video. And today, we also had some re-certifications with archetagier training. And we had about three guys that got shot with archetagier. That's part of our training so they can know what it is also. So we've got some, a lot of stuff that went on this last couple of weeks. And we just can't talk about them because there's not enough time. But yeah, thank you very much, Chris, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Chief Reyes, I know that we've been working, he'll be attending the hurricane preparedness. Seems like it's already upon us, May 1st, June 1st. It's hurricane season. And also on the radio communication, we kind of already have a timeframe if you'd like to report on that.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners. On the communication aspect of it, that we, the city purchased three months back, hopefully the timeline to have everything in place will be within the next, by May 1st, hopefully.
May 1st should be optimal.
Yeah, we should be getting the green light and starting the overlay and paying up to do the reprogramming and upgrading all the radios and things. So hopefully by then, it's going to take us about three or four weeks by the time we complete all the radios throughout the city. So we can be up to line with the rest of the valley.
Anything different that we're doing in preparation for hurricane season?
We're going to be out there taking some classes in reference to communication, sheltering, trying to work with the state assets and the local jurisdictions and things like that, meeting the different emergency management coordinators up there. Probably the same things, monitoring, making sure that we have all the drainage is clean and enough for the available sandbags. Yesterday, we got, it could be since last week, we got some emails that we're going to be getting some rain this weekend, high winds and apparently tornadoes and hail coming in and all that. So we had some calls yesterday afternoon that people were kind of active. So we kind of explained to them that, you know, we have everything in place and in case we need to, that automatically activate our team to be out there ready to go out there throughout neighborhoods and things like that.
And then just briefly mention how you were using technology to fight fires here?
Yes. Yes, we had a grass fire two weeks ago, 700 acre grass fire north of Alto Monito in Paloma Blanca subdivision. And DPS had their drone up there, the military agents, I believe. And they were able to shoot us live feed through our phones, devices that we had at the location in place. And we were able to see the fire, how it actually was starting. We were able to get access quicker and have our resources out there to be able to contain the fire. Because it was really high wind. We had about 20-plus miles per hour winds at that day throughout, after lunch, throughout the whole night. So, and then also take into consideration that when we have a wind shift, it affects us a lot in reference to that. So they were really a good asset to us in that situation. And a lot of the times, the communication that they have at the airport, they're able to access us to us in case we need something, you know, either law enforcement or fire or whatever.
It was a live feed from the drone to your phone?
To all the, all the devices that were at the location. Talking about iPads, telephones, or whatever, you know, smart devices and things like that. So we had a group of people there that were actually documenting everything there and making sure that the operation was going smoothly. So they were getting all the information in and the guys that were out there in the field working, the operation. So it was really good.
And it's great to be able to use those assets that belong to the state and being able to utilize them for our needs of our city and their community. So, I mean, that's great to be able to access the technology that's out there within our reach.
Also, we had another grass fire a day after that, and we met with the Texas Forest Service. I was talking to the individuals in charge of our region. So we're in contact with them. Hopefully, we can get some resources from them, you know, see if they can donate them to the city. We're trying to find out that. And hopefully, we can get a deuce and a half, a big armored truck, that we can use it for grass fire during the drought season and throughout the hurricane season, we can use it for rescue purposes also. So I'm trying to work with that and with the state. So hopefully, within the next month or so, I should be getting an answer.
Anything we can do, sir, that we can get for a very minimal price? Zero would be great. So absolutely, sir, anything we can, certainly can pursue that. So thank you, sir. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. I'd like to call on Mr. Klein. I know that he's been out there daily with the digital meters.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Yeah, we started the digital meters on February 23rd. So far, today, we have installed already 598 meters.
598?
Yes, sir. And we're going pretty, they're going pretty fast.
Any power install? Any power getting them installed?
Eh, a little breaks there and there at the meters. But I gotta go.
Where did you all start, Mr. Klein? Where did you all start?
And we went, the weather routes go Book 1. We started here at the Santonillo, at the water plant, old water plant. And we went all the way to Garcia Street. Then they came back at the, the weather routes started being away. Now, see now, we don't have no power to put them in our computers. And the truck will go the same way, reading the meters. There should be no power at all.
And just a note to the commission and to the public out there. The meters that have been installed, they're actually working. And the company will be reading them. So the bill that they receive in March, first day in March, second day in March, will have those digital readings. So the billing will contain a digital billing and also the manual reading for those analog meters that still haven't been replaced. And this is just, so in case you see, you know, the difference, this is the actual digital reading for those particular areas that Mr. Klein just mentioned.
Yes, sir. Is that what it's going to be?
So, and every month there, until they finish, some of the meters will be transferring over. And they're working closely with the billing department of the Public Utility Department. So just so...
So they're going to have two different readings? Let me make sure, please.
The reading...
The bill, in other words, is going to have two different readings? Or it's going to have...
Yes, two different readings. It's going to have the reading for the whole meter. And then when they start a brand new meter. And they're going to have that. they start a brand new meter. And they're gonna have that count, a number, a meter number and everything.
Okay. Do we anticipate any issues in reference to that or?
No.
Okay.
No, they're working closely with the in-code system that we have right now. They'll be able to upload it and work with Ms. Science to make sure that the bill is reflected correctly, especially as it relates to the new digital meter number and the account.
I've got an designated person going with them and getting the numbers, taking the meter, getting the reading, and then putting a new meter number for that digital meter, put it in the, also put it in the cart. So we have it in, booked it. So when that truck go there, we can go, if something's wrong, meters saying it's one, I reckon right, we can go to the cart and see what's the problem is, where the location is and everything.
Are you all also being trained on how to install them for future?
Yes.
You're getting trained on how to read them, how to?
Yes, sir.
Okay, how to install them as well?
Yes, sir.
I know they're gonna take care of all that now, but thinking down the road when?
When it's coming.
Okay, so all that is happening simultaneously?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So we anticipated it'd be a hundred percent by, what are we looking at? What's the?
I'd say about sixty to ninety more days.
Okay.
Because there are.
Let's say ninety days, we should be a hundred percent. If everything goes well, great. So a hundred percent digital water meters, which, excellent.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. Klein.
I know that we have the, the rest of departments have also been active. P E basketball will be starting. The library continued bringing us fame through Ms. Foltz's interaction with the State Library Department where they do the annual statewide conference. She's now actually one of the VIPs, so to say. A lot of work that she's done is gets recognized now at the state level throughout the different public libraries.
The Art Walk is tomorrow's, well, Ms. Foltz?
Well, we changed that because of the weather.
Okay.
We would want to change for the Washington Street as well. So we have rescheduled for March twenty-second.
Okay, rescheduled for the twenty-second. Okay. Which, by the way, those have been very successful, Ms. Foltz. Excellent. Had a lot of feedback from the community. And I think great to have those art walks in collaboration with other departments. So excellent.
I know the, had a successful on the Winter Texan appreciation, about seventy-some, about so many persons, Sarah?
Yes.
I saw him on the video that were dancing.
And we opened up this super.
Each department is, you have their report. If you have any questions, they're here to answer them.
This time, really, there's no question. But if there's any department head that would like to just, here's the opportunity to just share a little bit about your department, please feel free. I know we have the reports, but sometimes it's great to have your lovely faces just communicate what you're very proud of.
Well, I only got up because you said lovely faces.
There we go.
Actually, Mayor Commissioners, we're very excited with our Parks and Recreation. I know that, as a note you have, Commissioner Ramirez wanted to start our volleyball league. And I've contacted the athletic directors from Roma and Zapata. And they're very enthusiastic at the fact that we're trying to host it. As far as what I found out, back then, the eighties, Coach Viegas, Jaime Guerra from Roma, they used to have it in the eighties. They used to have a star counting league. So hopefully, we can start our Parks and Recreation Summer League with volleyball, head volleyball coaches. I've spoken to Drina from San Isidro. He's a head volleyball coach. I've spoken to Ana from here from Rio and, let me see, and Angie from Roma. And so, I mean, we're excited. I think it's, it's a progress that I think it's gonna be successful. It's gonna work out for us. Also, I met with Cindy. She's the Border Region Director or right now slash Secretary, because we're trying to do a program with them to work together to host a, an activity for the unfortunate kids that carry on their program with the Region One. And that would probably be some, be an activity for them in May, to have a little event for those kids. I'd like to switch over to our Boys and Girls Club. We're very excited that we actually purchased a twelve-passenger van. We're in the process of doing policies, procedures to utilize the van. And we need to bring it to our council or to our board. So we're very, we look forward for it. And I think with the van, it'll increase our enrollment with the Boys and Girls Club as well. Because it'll give us a chance to start picking up children around the Boys and Girls Club and even farther, all the way here to close to the Lomas Elementary. And I've talked to, again, Mr. Contreras. I know I've mentioned that for previous meetings that we've held. Coach Contreras was a head basketball coach here in Rio. And he's willing to, he's still, we're gonna start the camp somewhere in April. I know with our, with our basketball, our youth basketball, we intend to begin our league play on, right after spring break. And we're gonna utilize Wednesdays and Thursdays because Monday is Tuesday CCD. So we're working around that area. So we won't interfere with that. I know we had a problem last year, but so far, so far, so good. And that's about it. I mean, we're, you know, I think it's great progress that we're making in both departments. And it's looking good for the first success in the summer.
Do you all have a packet of all the activities in your calendar that was handed out? And you can see that each department is moving forward in placing the?
We got any, any scheduling to be done at the Basilio Park?
Actually, sir, we do. We'd like to utilize, I know, once, once we put the backboards, and again, I didn't even mention that, we ordered some backboards and it should be installed by next week. And a lot of the games that we did have scheduled at Viegas Gymnasium and the Old Ringo, we're probably gonna utilize the Basilio Veral Park to play in outdoor games out there. I think with the floor that we've added and the new backboards that we've added, we'll probably intend to have a few games there. I know that we have to find some mats, because I know there's a lot of metal balls across.
One thing, you know, we need to look into next year's budget to see if we can be able to get some mats and we can be able to put there, you know, protection of the kids.
And once installed, I know we can start doing a lot of three-on-threes and do a lot more adult leagues out there. And that'll, that'll really benefit the city as well. And I did, I forgot to mention, we are having during the Boys and Girls Club, our Easter egg hunt. It'll be on March nineteenth. And it's ages from zero to twelve years old. And it's the first time we're doing it. And I'm sure it'll be a success. And we've sent, sent out flyers. We're putting a video up together to get it, get that going. And that'll be on March nineteenth.
And also on the canned food drive, that was a great program to do. I mean, excellent with the kids, finding ways to give back to the community and starting early. They're willing to give back in some way, shape, or form. That was great as well.
Yes, sir.
Excellent.
Mayor Commissioners, if I may, I'd like to have Delinda just report real quickly because in relating to the Parks and Rec for the city, the skate park, which I'm sure a lot of people in the community are anxiously awaiting, when is this skate park going to get built? So Ms. Ginn, please step forward.
Mayor and Council, good evening. And I'm not gonna take the limelight from the presentation you're gonna have from Mr. Gilbert Guerra with Rio Delta. But just to give you an update on some of the projects that we have on our plate right now and are moving forward. Last night's EDC meeting allowed our EDC to provide an additional ten thousand dollars in investment to the skate park for a grand total of seventy-five thousand to match the Texas Parks and Wildlife Grant that the city received. And Mr. Guerra will tell you more about the project and when it's gonna get going. But it won't be too long before we will be breaking ground and celebrating a new skate park in Rio Grande City. In addition to that, we also approved a design for repairing the Cafe Mexico sidewalk. We're going to seek a structural survey of the cafe building. And we're adding a future phase, if feasible, for a sidewalk repair on Main Street. The project currently involves the site on Flores Street. And we selected that design. And we're gonna look to including the Main Street one if possible. We'll see, based on the results of the structural survey, how we can proceed on that. This project is not only gonna provide walkability in the downtown area, but it's gonna enhance the aesthetic look of that area. And we want, you know, for people that come through Rio Grande City to see the beauty of it. And so this, this is a project we're really looking forward to. We also have a USDA grant in progress. And our office is working with the agency to provide them updated location information. In addition to that, we have been supporting businesses in various forms. One of those is through our grant program. These grant programs that the board has authorized and granted are adding value to commercial properties in Rio Grande City. They're upholding building codes and ordinances for Rio Grande City, creating jobs and a tax revenue for Rio Grande City. We have a Lunch and Learn lecture that we kicked off in February, together with our code enforcement team. As they're undertaking the health inspections, we have them, we have them present to our local restaurants what that, those changes will involve. And more than anything, I think they just got a chance to meet the team, get to know what to look forward to and how easy it is to work with our code enforcement office. We received nothing but compliments on that lecture. And thank you, Gilbert, for being out there. And the Fire Department, Chief Reyes, and Mr. Manue to come and talk about fire, the fire codes and such. We do have our next Lunch and Learn lecture at Kelsey Bass scheduled for April fourteenth. And we look forward to that event. We're also supporting various of the projects. I heard the Winter Texan visit. We were glad to be a part of that project. And we are also very excited to be working with Norman, the library at Art Walk. Unfortunately, the weather's preventing us from having this event tomorrow, but we look forward to March twenty-second. I had a long list of activities our EDC report had. I think I kept them, everybody pretty late. I won't bore you with those details, but I'd be more than happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
That's it, sir.
Let's move on then to number two, Consent Agenda. As all matters listed under Consent Agenda are considered to be routine by the commission and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. However, if discussion is desired, that item or items will be removed from the Consent Agenda and will be considered separately. We have the two, A and B, Approval of Departmental Travel Requests, and B, Approval of EDC Action from Meeting of March eighteen sixteen. We have your reports, any?
Does any of the commission wants to take it out of the Consent Agenda?
Anybody wanna take it out?
If there's no questions, I move that vehicle.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Garza. We have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion on this item? The discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next business in order is number three, Under Ordinances, Letter A, Second Reading and Adoption of Ordinance Number Twenty-Sixteen dash three, Amending the Twenty-Fifteen, Twenty-Sixteen General, Special, and Enterprise Funds Budget.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the second reading. The budget amendment is called for expenses that go beyond what was budgeted in this year, this past October. From the first reading to this reading, we have added two, two items that needed to, to be included in order to cover the cost, which was for a second site for the city election on May seventh. So we had to include an additional ten thousand. And in going and reviewing the utilities at the Parks and Rec, we have added additional parts and additional utilities. And that will be to a tune of twenty-two thousand. That will cover to the end of the year, September thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. That covers electrical and water for all the park systems that the city has. The previous items did not change in the administration from the first reading and from the EDC budget amendment. You do have my memo there. You have the supporting documentation. And unless anyone has any questions, this is all in order with the ordinance.
Well, Mayor, just to go back real quick on the, just in case we get any questions from the community, why we're opening up a second site, you know, I would just like to iterate, you know, that one of my main concerns was during the afternoons, you know, after lunch, our, you know, it's a lot of traffic. And trying to be able to get the residents of Rio Grande City to come vote on the west side of Rio Grande City was gonna be difficult. So, you know, the commission got together and we just decided we'll open a second site so we can make it more accessible to give the authorization and give the residents of Rio Grande City the opportunity not to have to come all the way to this site to be able to come vote. By opening up the second site, you know, we'll be able to give better accessibility to come be able to exercise the right to vote at the second site.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I also think that it's a good idea based on the, on the safety issue of the traffic.
We have a motion?
Aye.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next business in order is number four, Resolution, Letter A, Since Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number Twenty-Sixteen dash six, Authorizing the Submission of a Grand Application for the Drug-Human Trafficking Prevention Project, Edward R. Byrne, Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division.
Mayor Commissioners, I think this is the second funding, funding year that we're applying?
This is the second funding year for this grant. And it's for the reapplication for the other year. And, you know, it's really working great. We've had some success with this program. And it's solely funded by CJD. So it's a good brand.
Have a motion?
A moment.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second for the discussion on this item.
And the total is forty-eight?
Forty-eight, yes, sir. It is.
What does, what does this cover, Chief?
It covers the patrol officer fringe benefits and some, some expenses regarding whatever the officer needs and some training. So, yes, it's another body on the streets that, you know, it's boots in the ground. They're just doing the interdiction and, you know, human trafficking and narcotics, which is good.
I have a motion?
All right.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second for the discussion. For the discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, she carries. Next business in order is Item Four B, Discussion and Possible Action to Approve Resolution Number Twenty-Sixteen dash seven, Authorizing the Submission of a Grand Application for the Rio Grande City Crime Victims Liaison Project, Victims of Crime Act Formula Grant Program, Office of the Governor, Criminal Justice Division.
Again, Mayor Commissioners, this is the first time the city will apply for a crime victim, the liaison person. Chief, you can go ahead with the details?
Yes, we're gonna be applying for crime victims liaison. And Commissioner, I think you've, you know what this is about, because you and I have done it before when we worked at the Liaison Office. This is, this will help our victims and crime to follow up the criminal justice process all the way up to the courts. It'll also bring outreach to the community about crime victims, what to do, how to follow up. I think a lot of crime is not reported due to people thinking that they're alone. That's not the case. And, you know, this will be a separate person from our department. And it's also funded, if we do get the grant, it's completely funded, which is good. So, you know, this is something new for the police department. We've never had, we've always had their investigators, everybody else do this. But this will be a specialized person that would undertake this if we do get this grant award.
And it's to hire an actual crimes victim liaison?
That is correct, yes.
And hire that individual and they would be?
That's what they would do. Yes, they would get all the statistics and numbers and, you know, they would go through the reports and forward the victims of crime to the appropriate agency and follow up with the, make sure that the protective orders get done and everything else that belongs to them.
What is more or less the timeline? I mean, once you submit the application, do we?
I think we'll, there's a process. It'll take maybe about a couple of months before everything gets, gets out there. The rating and everything just goes along with after the resolution. And we just see this submitted after the application, with the application.
And that's great for finding grants that we can apply to that are beneficial to the different departments, which is great. to the different departments, which is great. All right, any other, I have a motion?
Is this a grant that you need to apply, uh, every year?
I'm, I'm thinking, I'm thinking we apply it for two years. Uh, I think that's what this application is for. Um, but, yes, we would have to continue applying for it at that point. Unless we would, uh, you know, but take up the expense of hiring somebody ourselves directly from the city. It's a good start. It's a good program.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Thank you, Chief. Next, uh, business in order is item five, contracts and agreements, letter A. Discussion and possible action to rescind, rescind change order number one to TDA contract number seven one three four zero nine, Doino West Side Subdivision, number two sanitary sewer project.
Mayor Commissioners, um, this item four A and four B are related. Um, and this all has to do with the closing of the TDA grant on the Charco Blanco, uh, West Side Doino Subdivision, first time sewer project. Um, I know during the closeout, they kept looking at how many homes were actually connected, how many home, and how many, uh, septic tanks, cesspools had been decommissioned. Um, as they ratified their own numbers, uh, there had to be some changes on the count. And that's why the change order reflects those changes that had been previously approved. Um, Ms. Lissette Peña is managing the contract. And if you have any further questions, she's available.
I already, right on, is there any discussion on that or?
And this will close it up?
Yes, sir. We are pending reimbursement. And as soon as the state receives this executed change orders, they'll be able to send us, uh, the withheld funds that are due to the city.
All right, so move back. Okay, we have a motion to approve. Approve, yes. We have a second?
Oh, second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Commissioner Jones, we have a second. Go ahead.
Uh, Mrs. Vez, uh, what was the difference in the, in the connection? How, how many, how many more did we have?
There was an empty lot in the direction.
I'm sorry?
An empty lot. We connected the empty lots on that subdivision as well.
What was, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we, we didn't count one of the empty lots.
Oh, okay.
So we went back and we surveyed the street again, and it was an empty lot that we were missing.
On, on every empty lot that they leave, uh, a tap in?
Yes.
Yes?
All right, so we have a motion. We have a second, Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion on this item?
Motion was to rescind the change order number one, is that correct?
Yes. We have a second. Any further discussion on this item? The discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, she carries. Next, uh, business in order is item five B, discussion and possible action to approve final change order number two, to TDA contract number seven one seven four zero nine, which is, uh, Doino West Side Subdivision, number two sanitary sewer project. As, and this, um, as mentioned, is related to item five eight.
Change order number two basically now reflects the correct amount. Can you see the, the, the difference in the amount there? Based on that additional stubout for future sewer connection.
Any questions on those or?
Are you waiting for a motion?
Yes, I'm waiting for a motion.
That will go at the corner.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Garza.
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Jones. Any further discussion, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, motion carries.
I don't get a motion rate, I don't.
Remember, we're the only three here, guys. Next, uh, business in order is item five C, discussion and possible action to approve a supply install agreement with American Ramp Company for the construction of a skate park ramp structure at the Basilio Villarreal Municipal Park.
Mayor Commissioners, you have in your packet the supply installing agreement with American Ramp Company. This company is part of the buy board cooperative purchasing. Um, they have been approved by Texas Parks and Wildlife, uh, the grant, uh, agency, the grantor agency. Uh, you see that they will come in with just what's the ramp, the bull, the stairs. And, uh, the next following item, you'll see that the substructure foundation will be done through a different contract. This is a state-of-the-art skate park. And it will have a lot of future impact as we move forward to promote our city in different areas of recreation.
I was going to ask a quick question. Is it going to fill a whole vacant lot that's there, the piece, or is, how?
You have a, a rendition?
I just wanted to picture it.
You have a rendition in your package. Uh, when they came a couple of year, a year ago, they took actual measurements and surveyed it to make sure that it would fit within that area. And you can see the amount of space that will be available in the rendition that you have in your package. So it basically takes the length of it and then it's got some space on the side.
Ms. Gara, do you have additional comments on this?
Yes. These people, uh, were very thorough in their design. Uh, we're assisting on the, the portion that, that the city is taking on, which is, uh, all the subject preparation and building the, the footings for the structures that they're going to truck in. All these structures are, are precast, they're trucking them in. The city's going to have the footings built and put in place. And this, this will be the, the next item on the agenda for consideration. Uh, so that when they come in, all they do, they set the structures in place, uh, to proper grade. And then, uh, the, the final finish or the final, uh, slab will be poured in place to, to make sure that all the features are joined evenly and smoothly. Um, the, the, this group did a, a, a great job with the plans as far as I, I can tell and, uh, very thorough in everything they did. So it, it, I, I, I don't expect anything less than an excellent product from them.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a second. Any further discussion on this item?
One, I was going to mention one thing that we might want to start looking into. Mrs. Vez, is, uh, uh, any requirements that are, that are going to be needed to, to view the facility, safety requirements and?
And those are being, uh, developed by Parks and Rec's director, Mr. Peralles. He's looking at what other cities have. This will take about three, the most, four months to construct.
Uh, just to be clear on this, you know, uh, I know I walked in during the time period that they were, they were designing the skate park. And I just wanted to make it clear just to the residents of Rio Grande City that this design was created by the, the kids that showed up to that meeting.
That's correct, Mr. Jones. We actually, uh, stopped and talked to the kids who skate on Britain and the different areas in town. We invited them to the meeting. They actually met with the company, uh, and he had brought several, uh, designs. And they are the ones who inputted into the creation of this, this skate park. So they'll, they'll be invited to the groundbreaking in the ribbon curtain.
In other words, we got the input directly from the kids that are going to be using this and adults that are going to be using this as well.
There will be some adults also.
I'm sure there will be adults as well. All right, so we had a motion to approve. We have a second for the discussion. For the discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Next, uh, business in order is item five B, discussion and possible action to award bid and execute a contract with Luxembourg Trading LLC for the construction of the concrete substructure for the skate park ramp at the municipal, oh no, at the Basilio Villarreal Municipal Park.
Mayor Commissioners, as, uh, Gilbert mentioned, Gilbert Gara mentioned, this is the second phase for the foundation phase of the skate park. You have the bid tabulation. I know Mr. Gara provided a, that recommendation in your packet. They were the low bidder, Mr. Gara.
Just to give you some, uh, excuse me, background on, on the procedure, Mayor. Uh, on the twenty-fourth, we opened bids for the, for the, the city's portion of the project. It's involved, uh, digging out three feet of, of soil, uh, contacting two feet of select fillback in there, putting in a, a, a foundation pad, uh, in preparation for the, the components of the skate park to, to be brought in. Uh, two bids, uh, were, were, were brought in. We opened them up on the twenty-fourth. Um, we, we did a bid tabulation. You should have one there in your packet. Uh, if you look at the, the bid tabulation, uh, there, there, there's a, a tabulation, two tabulations for Luxembourg Trading LLC, which would be a parallel bidder at the bid opening, and one for Gomez Paving LLC. When we did the bet, the tabulation, we noticed that Luxembourg Trading had redone the bid form and changed the quantities on the first three items, which involved what they were going to cut and fill. The young man they had putting the bid together and looked at the whole site and said, oh, well, we need to, to do the whole site with cut and fill. But in actuality, all we need to do is just the areas that the structure's going to occupy. But we're building in essence in a spread footing. So he changed those numbers. He was the low bidder with the changed numbers at seventy-four thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars, but nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety cents. The high bidder was, uh, Gomez Paving at ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty-three thousand and forty-three cents. Sorry, ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and three dollars and forty-three cents, excuse me. When we adjusted the bid quantity back to what they were supposed to be, what was on, on the bid form, uh, Luxembourg Trading's LLC's, uh, bid came down to sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and seventy cents. Uh, I checked with the, with the owner of the company, with the company to, to see if, I move, first of all, I informed them of their, of their mistake and checked to see that if, if we corrected the bid quantity, if the unit prices would still be valid. He assured me that they would, that they were, and that they would honor the correct price. Uh, we asked them for letters of, of reference. They, they turned in three, they should be in your packet. Uh, we did ask if it was going to be able to, to provide payment and performance bond. They said that, that they would not, but that they would accept a one-time final payment since it's a small contract in lieu of having to pay for, for payment and performance bond. Uh, and so what I'm recommending to the city, when I have before you, the recommendation to award for the corrected amount of sixty-seven thousand, four hundred and nine dollars and seventy cents, with the condition that they only accept a one-time payment after all work has been completed and accepted by the city. So in other words, the city is now, is not out anything until we accept the project. Uh, that's in lieu of having a payment and performance bond to cover us while we're building the project. And I don't know if you have any questions regarding that.
And, 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 uh, your recommendation is the, the one on, on the bottom?
The sixty-seven.
The sixty-seven, four oh nine seventy. The one on the bottom was just for illustrative purposes, to, to show you what, what the difference had been. The recommendations in the letter. Nor- normally for contracts over twenty-five thousand, uh, an entity would ask for payment and performance bond to cover the entity in case that the contractor runs into trouble, can't finish, or has unpaid bills, uh, that starts showing up at, at the entity's desk, at the city's desk. And that's what the payment and performance bond is for. Uh, in this case, being that it's a small contract and they will accept a one-time payment, we're not out, not a cent.
Not a cent.
Until we accept the project.
In other words, once they completed and we're happy with it and said, okay, then we?
And that we have their waiver of leave.
And they're all tested. They'll have to be tested for compaction, they'll be tested for strength on the, uh, concrete, for the footings. Um, they'll also, uh, have a retainage deducted from the payment, which we will wait for at least thirty to forty-five days to see that there are any other missing items or punch lists that need to be complete. So all in all the, uh, and we have worked with this company before. They have proven to, to be very diligent in, in carrying out a good job for the city.
Mayor, I'm going to, we go with the recommendation of, uh, the engineer with the, the bid of sixty-seven, four oh nine seventy.
Okay, we have a motion to approve or to accept that bid, the lowest bid?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next, uh, business in order is item six, planning, this discussion and possible action on request by Melvin and Hunt for final approval of Vista del Norte subdivision.
Mayor Commissioners, Mr. Malau will present this item. It did get approved at the Planning and Zoning Commission on March seventh.
That's great. Good evening, uh, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, this subdivision is the, uh, it's along Monarch Lane, uh, the north side of the DPS office, the new DPS office. It's for final approval. We have, uh, done, uh, expand, uh, inspections on this, uh, project for Sagat City, uh, sewer line and water lines. And it goes to the, uh, police station in Los Trevinos area. Part, you know, it's, uh, for being annexed to the city. So you want to have residential area, you want to have DPS. And there's a couple of other projects, including the IDA school, like, in that area.
It was already approved by Planning and Zoning, I see here, of course, and, all right. Any questions? Do we have a motion?
Do we have restrictions on the property?
Yes, sir, we do.
It's attached.
And, and the issue with water and sewer are all taken care of?
Yes, sir, yeah. Unlike the, uh, other surrounding projects we've talked about in recent meetings, this one goes to different, uh, routes.
They're, they're requesting mandatory annexation.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, uh, business in order is letter B, under six, planning. Discussion and possible action on request for wine and beer retailers permit on, uh, premise late hours license by Jennifer Reyes for business located at thirty-six eighty-one West Highway eighty-three.
This, uh, is an application for an events, uh, center. This is very close to Alvarez Road on the south side of the, uh, highway in the recently, uh, annexed areas. Uh, again, he has served for that purpose in the past. But now, obviously, due to the annexation, it has to be brought to the city for permitting.
And it says here, it's, it's nothing there for a school or, or church or any of that. Ask for your memo.
There's a cemetery next door.
I told Mo Mera, um, according to the Planning and Zoning Commission approval?
Okay, we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed, she carries. Next, uh, business in order is item seven, city manager's report, letter A, presentation of annual Rio Grande City Police Department racial profiling report.
We have Chief Castillo present this annual, uh, report. It is mandated and we need to be in compliance in order to receive future grants.
Okay, this, uh, the, uh, this is submission of tier one, uh, partial exempt, the exceptional racial profiling report. Um, we're mandated to, to report, uh, this information and, uh, also to, uh, the Texas Commission Law Enforcement. Uh, the report to the, the commission was submitted in January, January twenty-first of this year. And, uh, this completes, uh, our, our requirement. Um, the, the page that you see are the number of, uh, what was required by law for us to report, number of motor vehicles stops, the race ethnicity, um, of the vehicle stops. And, um, if we knew the race ethnicity before the stop, the number of searches conducted and, uh, where, uh, if there was consent for the, to search a vehicle at, at that point. Um, do y'all have any questions on this report? Uh, we, we submit it every year and, you know, um, this is a, a partial, uh, report due to the fact that we, uh, do have, uh, audio, audio and, uh, video in our units. And, uh, we don't have to make a, a complete, full report.
What happens with these stats? I mean, what, so you send them out and do you get a report back? Is there some?
Yes, uh, the, the report that, uh, is submitted is, is the same report that you have, it just has another couple of pages on it that, uh, it also shows, uh, the, the tier one, uh, article in the code chrome procedures where, where we're supposed to report by law to the commission and also to, uh, to, uh, the governing body of the city. So, uh, and these numbers are there for anybody that, that needs to see them or wants to see them as, as based by law. And, um, you know, it, it, it matches what we do on a, on an everyday basis with, uh, our patrol officers and, you know, every pedestrian stop or any stop that, uh, the officers, uh, you know, make in the city.
What I'm trying to understand is what do they do with the report? I mean, what, what?
Well, this is, uh, to prevent, uh, Mayor, and-
Well, this is to prevent, Mayor, any racial profiling, and every agency does it, and there's supposed to be some type, if you see a pattern of racial profiling, you know, this shows that in the numbers, and also a complaint process, we have to have a policy on it, which we do, and how to report anything that fact, if that does occur with the citizen in our area. And then this is not also with us, it's every other law enforcement, every law enforcement agency that is required to report based on the tier reporting, you know, site or whatever the law enforcement agency stands under, or reporting.
In other words, if they see a certain pattern, then they bring it up to your attention and say, what's going on?
Exactly, and we also review our videos, you know, at points, our body cameras, you know, supervisor reviews every month, you know, they randomly start to pick out videos and see if there's a pattern in any of, you know, anything that matches, anything that might stand out that is wrong.
Okay.
Thank you.
This is just a presentation, it does not need any action.
Thank you, Chief. Next business in order is number eight, memberships and appointments, letter A, discussion and possible action to renew membership with the Texas Municipal League for the period of May first, twenty sixteen, through April thirty, twenty seventeen.
Mayor Commissioners, this is our annual membership to TML. They provide a lot of service, very good service to the city.
Yes, they do.
We strongly encourage that we approve this. Do you have a letter from TML outlining the services?
Has it changed anything as far as fees or compared to?
It's per population and it hasn't changed.
Well, we do get a lot of service for twenty-six sixty-four, huh?
I still move to approve, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion to approve, we have a second by Commissioner Garza. Any further discussion on this item? Further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Next business in order is item nine, executive session, chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, section five-five-one, dot zero-seven-one, consultation with attorney. Letter A, discussion with attorney regarding number zero-four-one-five-zero-zero-seven-two-nine CB, BF five-way services of Texas, DBA I-like way services at all versus city of Rio Grande City at all Texas Fourth Court of Appeals, San Antonio, Texas.
Mayor, I did get a text from our city attorney, she was in Harlingen, and it was raining heavily, so she said she might get here late, but I guess she didn't quite make it.
Okay.
So, we don't have an attorney present.
Okay, so then there's no need to meet, is that what we're saying?
Yes, there's no need.
All right, so this point, there's not going to be any action taken on letter A, nine A?
Nope, she just stepped in.
All right, let's revisit that, we will be meeting with her, city attorney, under letter A, discussion with attorney. It is, time is seven fourteen PM. We're back from executive session at seven thirty-one PM, and there's not, no action going to be taken on item nine A. Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? All right. Was there a second, Mr.?
There was a second.
Commissioner, all right, we have a second to adjourn. Any further discussion, for the discussion, all those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, she carries. Meeting adjourned. It is seven thirty-two.